I would have been perfectly willing to.
He's my savior. Gary is great.
Can we watch this? Is it out on YouTube? You need to wear a tie sometime. Free Carol out.
He's an impostor.
If you go to the right gay, like you'll see the tie.
His son's getting married too. I bet you have to wear a tie for that too.
That's not my fault. You don't even wear a tie in my head. We got married in a bar.
You got married in a bar?
A park.
Oh, I thought you said a bar.
Don't start that.
Oh, I would never say that until I was sure it was true.
My wife would kill me.
And then there's. There's too many other things. My hearing's not so good.
All right, welcome everybody. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Holmberg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. Adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. Next up, we have a presentation. A presentation of police communications plan and recruiting brochure. Police intern, Lizzie Reisinger.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Good. So if you don't know already, my name is Lizzie Reisinger. I was the police intern this summer. It was for my class, which is my major's public relations. I'm a senior now at UCM. So to start out, let's see. One of the many things that I did throughout this internship was ride-alongs, which was some of my favorite things. As you can see, those are pictures of me holding the ram, which is a very heavy thing. And then also, it's very heavy. And then the top picture, you see, I'm in the back of a car riding with two of the police officers. That was Lieutenant Lowry's retirement day, and we were escorting him back home, and that's when I got that picture. During these ride-alongs, I did a few tweet-alongs. One, some during the day, some during the night. Just to basically explain, you know, here's what's going on in our city. Those types of things. So to our communication plan, it's in your folder. I just want to go over quick things about that. So our mission for the Warrensburg Police Department is to create and maintain a safe city through partnerships with our community. Our vision statement is for Warrensburg to be one of the safest cities in America. So to introduce this plan. We want to make sure that our trust, our partnership, and our foundation of the community is highly important to sustain internal and external communications. And this plan is basically going to address externally and internally for the Warrensburg Police Department. And as you see in the outline, it breaks down each section of the plan. So let's turn to the next page. So the purpose of this plan is to promote communication internally and externally, like I just said. And to reinforce a strong line of communication among all departments. So as you see there, there's a list of different goals that are going to ensure that communication throughout the department. So for the next page, internal communications. We have a multitude of internal communication methods to reinforce for both non-sworn and law enforcement personnel. And the purpose of this is to provide accurate and timely information. And this is going to help minimize any rumors, any negative things like that. So our internal stakeholders are all of the Warrensburg PD members, family and friends of the Warrensburg PD, city council, city manager, and the department heads. So all of you. Methods of our communication currently include press releases, emails, power DMS, our website. Social media, one-on-one communication, and of course, our phone roster, which is our internet phone roster. For our external communications. This is, we'll focus on managing our communication and make sure each one of our messages is received through our external stakeholders such as our residents, social service agencies, media outlets, government officials, our educational institutions, some of the few. And then to maintain our communication with our community, wow, it is important to understand our various platforms and their potential as the department grows. And some of the things that the department has applied already is our website, our Twitter, press releases, and Facebook. So for the big part of this plan was crisis communications. A definition of crisis, there are two types throughout the Warrensburg Police Department that we could encounter. One is public relations crisis, and the other is a critical incident. And a critical incident crisis is defined by any event of a severe nature which threatens to cause or causes the loss of life or injury to citizens and/or severe damage to property requires extraordinary measures to protect lives and achieve recovery. And then a public relations crisis is defined as anything that affects the reputation of the department, which is typically brought on by confrontation or negative media attention. And then underneath all of those, it gives the different types of critical incidents. So purpose and who will be the spokesperson throughout that. The methods that we will obtain that, the best practices, and then how we're going to evaluate that certain crisis. And that same goes for the public relations crisis as well. So to evaluate the communication efforts that Warrensburg Police Department has communicated. We need to always progress throughout by making changes to this plan as needed. So we're going to gather feedback to evaluate its communication efforts to, which include cities, or city citizen satisfaction surveys, media coverage analysis, feedback from members of the department, and also a comparison of results of all of those things. So for future communication opportunities. We have wanted to start the chief's blog, which allows the community members to read information about the Warrensburg Police Department. An Instagram, which I started this summer, which expands the form of social media and connects on a new audience. Internal employee forums, anonymous surveys, an annual report, and a PIO, which we actually just sent two police officers to PIO school. And they will refine their skills in writing, communication, and social media. So this plan is, will be updated and revived annually for the purposes of revisions. And they should include trends in technology as those expand more. The brochure that you have there is for recruiting purposes. I created that for recruiting purposes for any incoming police officers. It gives information about the duties of the police officer, where they can apply, all those types of things. So if you want to look at that for a little bit, go to the next thing. So for social media purposes, this is my favorite part. I was able to post on the Facebook page. I was able to post on Twitter through the tweet-alongs. My, one of my tweets actually got retweeted by Chris Ketz, who is the KNBC meteorologist. This Facebook post that you see right there was the highest-reached Facebook post this summer, which was my post. It reached sixty-three thousand people. And then on the side there, it shows all the different stats for the past twenty-eight days of how much everything's gone up and how many posts we've reached, how many people have liked everything, and it's gone up significantly. So what's it like interning for the Warrensburg Police? It's interesting. It has its days. I have done things such as volunteer with the fire department and J-CAD through the, what's it called, Bylow Food Drive. Officer Carr and I went to the blood drive, and I watched him give blood and almost pass out. That was interesting. I saw a goat on a ride-along that I thought was a dog. I've taken many photos, like that photo of the police station right there that you see. It was just one random day that I said, you know what, I'm going to go take the camera out, and I took a picture of it. And then that's one of my posts that I also had with the Lion King meme. So that's it. Any questions?
It's okay. I have a Ford Explorer.
Oh, wow, yeah.
That was cute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I want to thank her too for all the hard work she did. She got a lot more pictures for us that we'll be able to use on our website and really brought some great ideas to us that we're going to be looking at and trying to incorporate some of those ideas from first recommended communication plan.
Thank you.
Great job. All right, next up, we're moving to item six, public hearings. First items six-one and six-two, I would like to open the public hearings together. A public hearing on an ordinance enlarging a GB general business district by rezoning land located at three oh nine East Market Street from R-one, single-family residence district to GB general business district. And concurrently, a public hearing on an ordinance enlarging a GB general business district by rezoning land located at three ten East Gay from R-two, one and two-family residence district to GB general business district.
Madam, Mr. Mayor and City Council, this is an application brought forward by two different property owners. Philip Zhu and Ying Sun owned the property at three oh nine East Market, and Jim and Wanda Skelton owned the property at three ten East Gay Street. Both of them are pursuing redevelopment of their lots in conjunction with a larger project from Casey's Marketing Company for the property at three oh, the new address of the project would be three oh three East Gay Street would be for a Casey's convenience store with frontage that would be oriented to McGuire Street but extend from Gay Street to Market Street. Currently, the property on Market Street is zoned R-one, single-family, and the property on Gay Street is zoned R-two, one and two-family dwelling district. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their hearing last week, held a hearing on this. There was a significant amount of public comment received at that meeting. And you have copies of all of that in your packet that you received in advance of the meeting, as well as it was on the packet that was on the website since last Friday. Planning and zoning committee did recommend approval of both rezonings, and their written findings are attached in your staff report as well. Included in the report are copies of the notices that have now been all met. And you have an affidavit with that publication notice in your packet as well. Staff has recommended approval of the ordinance, both ordinances, one for each property for the reasons stated in the staff report that its proposed zone is an extension of an existing general business district and is in keeping with the development and trend of the area. Be happy to answer any questions. I know Casey's is here this evening. His presentation they would like to make as well.
Is there any questions? I think it'd be, go ahead.
Oh, no.
I think it'd be great for Casey's to come forward and to kind of lay out the overview of what we're looking at and so that everyone knows as many facts as possible and might spark some questions moving forward. And then we can have a public comment after that, if that sounds good with you guys.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Lawback, SBB Engineering, the civil engineering consultant for Casey's on this project. Also with me tonight is Mike Bryant with the real estate department for Casey's and Jim Smoto with the legal department. Is it possible to get this plan up there? Or are we just going to refer to these?
No, they have it on either.
They have it on there. Okay. We'll do a brief overview, like Barbara stated, the projects on the east side of McGuire between Gay Street and Market Street. There is an existing gas station there that will be demolished. And two houses and some other vacant properties that are all part of the project. One of the reasons for rezoning is we're going farther to the east with our project. Right now, along McGuire, the pavement and even the canopy for the gas pumps are encroaching into the right way. So we're taking everything and moving everything farther to the east. And then we're also closing off several entrances along McGuire. Lining one entrance kind of up in the middle to align with what's on the other side of the street. So we feel that's a good improvement, removing the existing entrances from traffic standpoint. And then at the, on the south end from Market, we're moving that entrance farther away from the intersection. And then on Gay Street, we're moving that entrance farther to the east as well. Comparing the existing conditions, the existing gas store. There's currently no thirty-foot buffer on the east side. With this project, we're providing over a thirty-foot buffer on the south side, which is adjacent to three eleven Market Street. And then on the north side, adjacent to three twelve Gay Street. Our current line is currently about sixty-three feet away from the property line. So we're rezoning three ten Gay Street, but the majority of that property will actually be used as a buffer between our project and the residential on the east side. Where would we like to pass out the building elevations? Or they already got them? This is a newer prototype for Casey's. There's actually entrances on both sides, kind of on the front and the back, and there's elevations over here also. So it lends itself to the four-side architectural. There's no metal back on the building. So this is, you know, really one of the nicer protos that's going to be built at this location. I believe you also have the landscape plan in the packet. Like I said before, we're meeting the code requires for a thirty-foot buffer between general business and residential. We're providing a little over a thirty-foot buffer adjacent to the three eleven Market Street. And we're about sixty-three feet or so on the three twelve, three twelve Gay Street. On the south side, there's a certain buffer that the city requires when adjacent to R-one. So we're building a fence along the east side, and we're going to just continue that fence on, all the way up to Gay Street. One modification to the plans that we've done there on the last week or so. Docking to the neighbors at three twelve East Gay Street, they would like to move the trash enclosure from the current location that's in the packet and move it kind of on the northeast corner of the building. And we believe we can accommodate that, whether it's on the north side or south side. But we can definitely leave, leave that sixty feet plus or minus. I think we're sixty-three feet clear so that we can provide that buffer.
I'd like to ask a question, if you don't mind at this point. On the sixty feet, because I know that one of the homeowners I spoke to, that's very important, that buffer. Is, do you foresee anything or what approval, Barb, do we have to go through if that would have to change? Because I've done construction before, and sometimes you run into things you don't expect. So the sixty feet's firm to this plan, right?
I think the city can only hold them to thirty feet firm.
Okay.
I don't think we have, since this is a, it's not a conditional use permit where you could have additional conditions placed on the project. So rezonings don't allow for that.
Okay.
And so we can hold them to thirty feet. But let's say they do sixty, they do the sixty feet now, and they come back in three years and say, well, I have no storage in the building. We really need to put a shut-up for some dry storage outside. I wouldn't have a means, if they, if they honored the thirty foot, they held the thirty foot, then they could use the other thirty-three feet of that sixty-three feet for the wall.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
That was really kind of the end of our brief presentation. We're here for any question and answer that you may have.
Some more questions might come up as we move forward, so we appreciate you, you being out, working through the process here and also being receptive to the neighbors and being a good citizen to our communities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have several letters as well as a conversation synopsis from the planning and zoning meeting that have already been read publicly. But we also have a few letters that have yet to be read publicly. And if those individuals are not here, I will briefly read through these letters just so that everyone is aware of those. And then we will move to the public comment period on the sign-up sheet if anybody still wants to sign up. You're welcome to do so. Just kind of walk up and let us know, and we'll get you added to the list. First is a letter of support from Presiding Commissioner Bill Gable. Maybe I'll hit the bullet points because there's a few of these, so in respect of time, I'll try to break this down a little bit if possible. As a whole, his bullet points are the overall use of the land will continue as a gas station convenience store, which has been its use for several decades. Next bullet point, a high visibility. The high visibility of this particular location on the main thoroughfare through Warrensburg is one that incoming UCM students and visitors to our community drive by daily. The increase in commercial assessed value and sales tax, and also the overall improvements to that location with a new and upgraded store. He encourages the mayor and city council to vote in favor of the expansion of the general business district on both parcels. That was Bill Gable, Presiding Commissioner. Next, we have a letter of support from David Sheehan. This is the same letter that was included in the Daily Star Journal, which I guess has already been made public. But it briefly states, "My letter is in response to the article written by Sarah Lawson. I felt the need to respond to several of the comments or quotes in the article. I own the building at two oh one North McGuire. I'm a resident of Warrensburg. I can understand people having questions, but I can't understand how the city in any way being against this project. This section of McGuire, which already has a gas station, is in very poor condition. There is really no nice way to say it. Looks dirty, rundown, just rough. Cleaning up the area and putting in a nice Casey's will only increase property values. This will also improve our busiest street appearance. Warrensburg has been very fortunate and should be thanking businesses along McGuire. Marriott Chipotle, Insight Eye Care, Central Missouri Community Credit Union, and several others have made improvements as well. Please try to remember what part of, what this part of McGuire looked like before some of those businesses moved in. I would call, I would have to call into question any council member voting against the project. The city is not going to improve this section of McGuire. We are looking to upgrade an older rundown gas station with a newer, modern, cleaner gas station store. Not to mention, there will be several more jobs created. I also believe if our state senator lived anywhere else, it would be very much in favor of this project." And that was David Sheehan. Next letter is from Jim and Wanda Skelton. And he did lay out bullet points. So Jim and Wanda, he states that we owned, they own three ten East Gay. They're asking for the rezoning, and they're former owners of three twelve, three fourteen East Gay, and previous owners in years past on three eleven East Market. They support the rezoning of both properties. Number one, the new Casey's convenience store would generate more tax revenue for the city than the existing store. The new Casey's would be more attractive than the existing structures that are included in the new development. The new Casey's would provide safer and more convenient egress and ingress to McGuire Street, Market Street, and Gay Street. The new Casey's would demonstrate to other local and out-of-town developers that the city of Warrensburg plans for the future and is very pro-growth with sound judgment and wise decisions. Three oh eight East Gay was zoned residential but automatically became zoned commercial when this lot, when this lot became vacant and also joins a commercially zoned lot. Should this, he asked a question, should this rule apply to three ten East Gay as well? In the year 2013, your official zoning map indicated that three oh nine East Market Street was already zoned commercial and that the east property line of three oh nine extended straight through north to Gay Street. Making the west half of three ten East Gay zoned commercial. The property values of the neighborhood would go up because of the attractiveness and the convenience of the new Casey's store. In the year 2013, we suggested to city council that the entire Gay Street from Washington Street east to Burkhardt Road should be rezoned to commercial and light industrial because more than half of the front footage along Gay Street already have these uses. Also, the new zoning would provoke growth and new development and increase the city's revenues. The Casey's organization is a well-respected, community-minded, and responsible company. It also has three existing stores in Warrensburg. This certainly shows that Casey's loves Warrensburg. And then he goes through and highlights him and Wanda's experience. Jim was a licensed professional real estate appraiser, mortgage lending, real estate sales, owner-operator of two real estate brokerage companies, property management, owner-operator of four retail locations, city planning and zoning commissioner, active in many community organizations, battalion clerk, a US Army, public school teacher, graduated UCM, citizens of the Warrensburg community for over forty years. And they asked for our consideration and are in favor of rezoning both properties. Next.
I just want to ask a quick question if I ever get, was, because you mentioned that three oh eight became, became commercial. Was that a case of it was already, it was, there was a residential property on it, and they tore it down, which made it commercial because it was already commercial, or?
It was always zoned commercial. It had a residential use on it.
Okay.
But that was an unconforming use.
Right. That's, that, when I read that, that's why I was kind of like, that didn't make any sense, but that's what I thought happened. So, okay.
Next letter is from Drew Lewis, who is here, which I'll have you read here in just a minute, Drew. Let me finish one more letter. I believe this is the last letter. All right, last letter. Thanks for being patient with me, everybody. A letter of support, this is from Charlie Cavanaugh, Western Commissioner. Johnson County recognized that the fact that the city of Warrensburg has made great strides to be mindful of business growth in recent years. Economic growth and improvements in commercial property while located in the city of Warrensburg have an impact on the county as well. Lots of other stuff, but there's the gist of it. And he encouraged the mayor and city council to vote in favor of the expansion. And Drew, if you'd like to go ahead and come forward. And I'll let you read and introduce yourself.
I'm Drew Lewis. I'm the president, current acting president of Johnson County Economic Development Corporation. I know you are very familiar with JCEDC and what we do, obviously, as you guys support us. Dear Mayor and members of the city council, the Johnson County Economic Development Corporation is a public-private economic development group that serves all of Johnson County, Missouri, and is headquartered here in Warrensburg. JCEDC is the only county-wide organization providing community and business support services, including a focus on business retention, expansion, recruitment efforts. Through these efforts, JCEDC continues to be a leader in the growth of jobs, wealth, investment, and tax base for the benefit and citizens of Johnson County. A public meeting of the JCEDC Board of Directors was held Thursday, August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. During this meeting, the board took action to support the property owners' request to expand the general business district to include their properties. Owners of the property at three oh nine East Market, which is currently zoned R-one, single-family residence district, has requested a zoning change to GB general business. And in addition, the owners of the property at three ten East Gay, which is currently zoned R-two, one and two-family residence, has requested a zoning change to GB general business. The JCEDC Board of Directors took the supportive action based upon the understanding that Casey's Marketing Company in conjunction with all the current owners has submitted a minor plat application for the development called Casey's Addition. The final plat proposes consolidating eight lots into one. The highly visible location at the corner of Missouri Business Route thirteen, East Gay Street and East Market Street experiences almost eight thousand vehicles per day. Based on data collected, a new, modern-model Casey's store located at this corner would generate additional profits for Casey's and sales tax for the community. In addition, the board is confident in the city's ability to work with Casey's on a new ingress egress at the corner in order to bring about newer traffic safety measures for the convenience of Casey's customers and the community. In conclusion, the JCEDC Board of Directors encourages the mayor and the city council for the city of Warrensburg to vote in favor of the expansion of the general business district for the two parcels as requested by each of the property owners. to vote in favor of the expansion of the general business district for the two parcels as requested by each of the property owners. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comment and information, if you have any questions or concerns, you can feel free to contact me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Denny Hoskins, three fourteen East Gay.
Thank you, Mayor London, members of city council. I come before you today as a homeowner, a friend, and neighbor to the other homeowners on Gay Street about the proposed change in zoning from residential to commercial. We welcome Casey's General Stores to Warrensburg as the current owner of the gas station has continued to let his pop- property deteriorate. And from my understanding, he even leveled a threat, uh, to planning and zoning on August fifth that said that he would, if city council did not approve the changes, he would just continue to let it deteriorate. A new building and facilities will definitely spruce up the appearance of the current location. Although we have some concerns about traffic as well as lighting, we appreciate the impromptu meeting with Casey's General Stores, who has representation here tonight, to address many of our concerns and look forward to seeing the revised site plan that, uh, has changes such as moving the dumpster, dumpster location, uh, Gay Street ingress and egress, uh, so the lights aren't shining on the first house behind Central Bank, as well as, uh, changes to the, um, keeping the existing driveway on three ten East Gay. Uh, so, uh, the property setback would be a little bit further than that. We asked the city council, Nolan, Brian, Casey, Scott, Robin, as well as Casey's General Stores, to consider how this will affect the homeowners on Gay Street as they build this new store. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So are they, it, I mean, I know you had a meeting there, is that, is the plan to, to make changes to that? Because I just, I want to make sure we don't get in the same situation we got into with the Holiday Inn Express.
Well, again, as the engineer for Casey's stated, they are going to submit a different site plan that moves the, uh, the garbage, trashcan receptacle area to the northeast or the southeast. Again, that's, uh, an agreement brokered between them as a business and the individual residents. As far as whatever plan they submit meets city code, we have no ability to enforce civil matters between property owners. But I believe that Casey's will hold true to their word.
We're, we're acting in good faith with Casey's, uh, General Stores, and, um, I, I believe that they will honor those commitments.
I appreciate the question, Brian, because I had some concerns when I visited with homeowners. I was able to visit with people on both streets and get, um, different opinions and stuff, and I think that the concerns were valid as, you know, as a homeowner looking for their neighborhood, so I appreciate Casey's working on that, um, with you.
Thank you.
Is the, is the intent to keep, to have four stores now in Warrensburg, or are you going to close one down to?
That'll be a final operations decision.
Okay.
As we're now, this is a first improvement to our community.
Any other questions for Denny?
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Jim Skoloda.
Hi, I'm Jim Skoloda with Casey General Stores, and I have nothing to say, these gentlemen said it perfectly. Um, if you have questions for me, I'm just one of their attorneys, but I'll be sitting here, um, all night if you have anything else to ask.
Thank you, Jim, thanks. Uh, next up, we have George Hout, two sixteen East Gay.
It sounds to me pretty much like this is a done deal, but I would like to remind the council that not long ago we sunk a huge amount of money into a bypass in order to ease the congestion problem, uh, on Maguire Street. Shortly after that, the city realized that the bypass had not fixed the problem of congestion and developed a plan to improve North Street to reduce the traffic congestion at the corner of Gay and Maguire. This plan fell apart when the city could not work out a deal with the Baptist Church to buy properties needed for the North Street extension east to Burkhardt Road. Thus, the congestion problem was not completely solved. It's my understanding that the people of Warrensburg elected their city council members to help solve problem areas facing the city, not to make them, make these problems worse. Approving a super Casey's with fourteen gas pumps at the corner of Gay and Maguire will only compound an already unacceptable congestion problem. For this reason, and the possible negative effect on our first responders that use this intersection, as a primary, uh, response route, my wife and I are opposed to this project and feel the council should reject the proposal.
Any questions for George? Thank you, George. Anybody else that, uh, is not able to sign up that would still like an opportunity to speak on either the, uh, three oh nine East Market or three ten East Gay? All right, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and move on to item six-three, a public hearing on an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the southwest corner of one forty-one Northwest Twenty-One Road.
If you could think back to June, we have annexed a piece of, a triangular-shaped piece of land at the corner of southwest corner of one forty-one Northwest Twenty-One Road. This is a property, larger tract, uh, that surrounds it, was annexed, um, a couple of years ago, and this was inadvertently left out of the legal description at that time. The property is owned by the Elvin Molyneux Trust, and he has asked that it also be zoned general business, uh, along with the rest of the properties. So, the notice requirements have now been met for that. Planning and zoning commission recommended their approval of that request at their August fifth meeting. Staff would recommend approval as well, we've had no public comment on this one.
Anybody that wanted to speak on this item that, uh, failed to sign up? All right, we will close that public hearing and open a public hearing on item six-four. A public hearing on an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg known as right-of-way for a portion of Northwest Twenty-One Road, also known as Holden Street.
Also, at your second meeting in June, you annexed this piece of right-of-way into the city. This piece of right-of-way is owned by Johnson County Commission, and, um, they have asked that the city take over ownership of it as well, uh, as they have the other pieces north and south of it. With this piece annexed into the city, uh, once it is zoned and accepted by the city, then the city will have all of the land, uh, for the right-of-way from the fifty bridge north on Holden Street up to the roundabout that's, uh, set to open soon. So, uh, this is that last piece of right-of-way, I think there's a map in your packet that shows it and requests it to zone it general business as well. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their August fifth meeting. Uh, we've had no public comment on this one either, staff would recommend approval of the ordinance.
Anybody sign up for that one to speak? All right, we'll close that public hearing and open up item six-five. An ordinance suspending the provisions of section three dash four for certain special events, September twenty-seventh and September twenty-eighth pursuant to sections, uh, three fourteen B of the Code of Ordnances. Chief Walker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, Warrensburg Main Street has, uh, submitted their plan for the annual Burf Fest, uh, September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. In conjunction with that, they would like to, uh, have, uh, open container permitted. They have submitted two plans for their open container. Uh, the first plan you have is similar, is Plan A, similar to past events, has the beer garden inside the fenced area and the parking lot in the rear of the Johnson County Courthouse at three hundred North, North Holden. Um, alcohol would only be permitted within that fenced area. Their second plan, Plan B, has the entire Burf Fest area designated as an open container area. This would be similar to the concerts that we have on Pine Street. Um, they would have, uh, open container permitted within the barricaded area of Burf Fest and, uh, have signage and volunteers stationed at all the entry points. Uh, additionally, they would have, um, several areas for, uh, sales of, uh, beer throughout the, the, the event itself. Um, on Saturday, they would have a, an extension of that to the north, uh, to include the area where the car show is going to be. Happy to answer any questions, uh, Jill is here from Main Street, if you have any questions for her as well.
I'd also like to mention that I am burdened with the public hearing section, the first and second reading of Warrensburg.
I was wondering about that.
You often would take public comment if you want, but you'll need to take action later in the agenda or first and second reading.
My only question on one of it is the ten AM to three PM on that Saturday, does that mean that they're going to sell alcohol from ten to three?
Yeah, the, uh, that's the hours of the car show, ten to three, and then Burf Fest is from ten until, uh, midnight, I believe, when they got that one.
I think that would be the only thing I would have a little problem, I think open container would be awesome, I did talk to several individuals that had pros and cons, but I felt like ten AM was a little early to start selling, serving alcohol. But I'm in favor of that.
So there's two plans, so are we voting on each of them individually, or did I?
We will, we will select one of those.
Okay.
Later, we'll probably hash it out and discuss it with ourselves a little later. Uh, then anybody want to speak to that, we're being extra thorough on this one? All right. So we'll close that unnecessary public hearing.
I was wondering about that, when you read that, I was like, what's that doing up there?
Okay.
But that was not a public hearing, Mr. Mayor, that was for ordinance.
Yeah, but we just got.
It was under the wrong thing, so, well, yeah.
We got to close on the public hearing.
It'll come up again later for first and second reading, uh, under ordinance, but, but.
I don't think it's in there though.
It's okay.
You'll have to come back to it.
Yeah. Do we need to amend the?
We amended the agenda before we adopted it.
You can do that, yeah.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
I'll move to amend the agenda to move the, um, six-five down to first and second readings, the six-five?
Yep.
Yeah, six-five, and then first and second readings.
Okay. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
All right, moving on to public hearing, item six-six. A public hearing, and this is going to be three concurrent, um, tax levy, uh, public hearings. Uh, public hearing on an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri, for general fund purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes. Also, a public hearing on an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri, for park fund purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes, and a public hearing on an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri, for debt service purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes. Anybody sign up for that one? Nobody? Anybody like to speak, uh, in regard to you, any of these three, uh, tax levies? All right, we'll close that public hearing and move on to second reading of ordinances. Uh, first item, seven-one, and, and ordinance to enable the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, to join Show Me Pace pursuant to section sixty-seven dot twenty-eight hundred to sixty-seven dot twenty-eight thirty-five, RSMO, the Property Assessment Clean Energy Act, and stating the terms under which the city will conduct activities as a member of such district.
I think we've discussed this multiple times before, this is with the intent of, uh, of making commercial properties eligible to participate in the PACE program as provided by the state. Uh, it does exclude, uh, residential participation in those programs at this time.
But that's included under a d- different program that's already in effect, correct? Wasn't there another PACE?
There is a, there is a program in place, it's just not being implemented here right now.
Oh, okay.
The PACE programs, um, and I think Phil's here, I saw him, and the, um, PACE programs have two aspects, they have the non-residential, so basically, commercial, not-for-profit. That can be, uh, they have a self-assessment, okay, so the city passed that. Residential has to go another step and work with the county collector, so that would, we would have to take it further. At this point, um, we're just passing, um.
All right, I misunderstood, I thought we already had one implemented for doing the other.
There are some communities.
The council did approve of, of an ordinance of support of the PACE program, but it has since grown and been further delineated, and they did say, we want for us to participate in that for both residential and commercial, council would have to take action once again to provide support. And I believe this council discussed that, there was support for the commercial side, but not for the residential side. So the ordinance before you this evening is to do that additional, um, ordinance of support, making commercial properties eligible to participate in that PACE program, and, uh, but the residential will not until council sees fit to make an additional ordinance of support to make it eligible in the future.
I think it's, and I think it's definitely something to look into for the residential side, I mean, there's just a lot more steps to it, that's why I wasn't ready to make that move right this second, but I think it's definitely something to, you know.
Well, we have to enter into a mutual agreement with, with the county, uh, in order to take that forward, and so, uh, we'll probably get this up and rolling, see how it goes, and then, uh, start discussion, uh, to, to see if we choose to move that forward. Uh, so the second reading would entertain a simple motion of approval.
Move to approve.
This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Uh, next up, under second readings, item seven-two, an ordinance establishing sewer base rate charges for the fiscal year twenty, twenty budget year in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in the City Council, at the July eighth council meeting, uh, the council decided to continue the current sewer rate schedule and the increase of the volume portion of the sewer, uh, utility charges. This will move volume charge of residential from five dollars and eleven cents to five dollars and sixty cents for volume more than two cubic feet, and from four dollars and fifty-six cents to four dollars and eighty-eight cents for commercial customers. Uh, there will be no char- no change in charge for residential customers with usage less than two cubic feet. Uh, staff recommends a new ordinance.
I'd move to approve.
This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to item eight, first and second reading ordinances. Ooh, yeah.
Just so we don't forget about it.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and, uh, move on to, let's tee up the, uh, open container for Burf Fest, let's take care of that first. So, an ordinance suspending the provisions of sections three fourteen for certain special events on September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth pursuant to section three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordnances. And again, this is up for two plans, uh, inside our packet, one is keeping it tight beer garden, uh, like previously, the other one is opening up to the, uh, border of the event. Discussion time.
I know personally, I've been very heavily supporting a Plan B, I mean, I'm excited to see this brought in, I've been wanting to see this for many years, so I'm glad to see it, I mean, because I've gone to other communities and you're able to have a beer and walk around the festival and stuff, and, I mean, I, I probably wouldn't have a beer at ten o'clock in the morning, so I don't think, I don't think there's going to be a lot of people buying beer at ten.
You don't know that.
Well, you're right.
I'm not quite sure, I mean, I'm in favor of it too, I just not quite sure, I like the ten AM start to.
Well, yeah.
If you start hitting it hard at ten, man, it's going to be a long.
It's going to be a long night, yeah.
It could cause problems too, that was my only thing, but I think it's a great, I think I, I mean, I favor it also, but.
But if you really wanted to, at eleven, you could walk into the bars and start drinking at eleven in the bar if you wanted to, because they're serving lunch, so.
And I'll, I'll end up going, I'm comfortable either way, I'd be, uh, very, um, transparent, though, um, with the folks I've talked to, and I talked to, tried to talk to people on each of these, um, I would not support Plan B. I do want to give Main Street a, uh, opportunity to try something like this with the family nature of it, and I did, um, have a chance to catch with Jill, and she asked for support, and I gave her a lot of consideration, but I would swing actually the other way for Burf Fest.
I think our PD does a great job, I think they'll be in plain clothes and officer clothes, and I think it'd be worth a try, because I think it, I've been in Maryville many times, they have open container totally, been at the State Fair, been to Concordia Fair, there's other places that have done it, and I've not heard any, um, big problems, but maybe there were.
Clinton's, Clinton's Festival.
Clinton's, yep.
I, I'm highly skeptical that the fraternities are going to show out and force to try and do keg stands at, at Burf Fest, so.
Well, and that's my other question was, who is going to set them up, and you can't just walk. Well, that's my other question was, who is going to set them up, and you can't just walk in a bar and walk out of bars with them. Jill?
What's the question, sorry?
You're, would you just walk into like Checker and get a beer? Or walk into Fifty and get a beer? Okay, there'll be stands.
Right.
Okay.
The, the alcohol will be sold and monitored by Main Street volunteers. And we normally have a training with the police department, alcohol training that trains people on how to spot fake IDs and how to spot people that were actually trying to drink. Yeah, all that kind of stuff. And as far as the ten o'clock, we put kind of the broadest. That doesn't mean we'll start at ten. It would really depend on our volunteer base, how many people we have, because it's going to take more volunteers to monitor this larger area. So we just wanted to have that flexibility to offer that, but that doesn't mean we'll necessarily start at ten. And everybody will be wristbanding just like before. We'll have to have people walking throughout the festival to make sure people that do have alcohol have been wristbanded and are actually twenty-one. So that is one of the.
So I know during the summer concert, you know, we had just Pine Street closed, and you were able to walk into the bar, order a drink. They gave it to you in a plastic cup, and you were able to walk back out. So at this event, you're not going to have that ability. It's just going to be strictly bought for those.
Okay.
I mean, I've been to a lot of events where you can walk around with your whole family. I mean, I've been to Germany where, I mean, whole families.
That's a whole nother world there.
Yes.
It's okay.
Well, I have, I have just as much faith in the citizens of Warrensburg to be able to control themselves as I do with the entire nation of Germany. So I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with option B.
I'd like to make a motion, just a motion you can still discuss, but I'd like to try the plan B that Jill proposes for the open container for Burghfest.
I'd support that.
I just attended an event last week, and let goes our Bag on Dam Strip was an event for the shootout. And this was a very controversial topic for their community. First time that they proposed a similar plan to this, where rather than having a, a beer garden, they opened it up. The checkpoints had a little bit of a line to get in, but moved quickly. And overall, I think it was well-received and seemed to go well. So I am in favor of, of giving it a try.
Okay, so you make the motion.
Make the motion.
Brooks?
For acceptance of the.
Open container through.
This is to pass the second reading.
Oh, just pass it. Okay, yes. To go to second reading, yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance suspending the provisions of section three dash fourteen for certain specific events, September the twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, and September the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, pursuant to section three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
So this is to accept?
Plan B. With option B.
With option B. Okay, yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item eight, one, first and second reading ordinance. An ordinance enlarging a GB General Business District by rezoning land located at three oh nine East Market Street from R one, single-family, single-family residence district to GB General Business.
I am, I want, I want to thank the Casey's, you know, I mean, because that, for me, that means a lot. Because when the developers come into town and they talk to the community and work with, work with people around, you know, that's, that's very important to me. And I want to thank you guys for, you know, having that meeting and, and making things work to where everybody is, is happy, so.
I'd like to second that because I did have concerns and, and it took me a while to, to warm up to my position of agreeing with it. And I would ask that you guys work out the details and honor the commitments, because it is important to that neighborhood, significantly important. So I appreciate that work you've done.
And then on the traffic, I mean, because that's still, that's still a concern of mine. And I know that we don't have a traffic study on that because it doesn't trigger a hundred car count, is why I understand. But with our new.
We've requested the traffic.
Oh, you have? Okay, I'm sorry. I must have missed that when I was reading that. So, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I must have missed that when I was reading it. So, but, um, so, but on that, though, with our, with all our new lights, as that traffic pattern, as that traffic changes, we'll be able to make adjustments to those lights, correct?
Unnecessary. I mean, we, the lights are triggered by the movement of the traffic plus the motion north to south through the town. Synchronize the motion. Signalization of your lights, your side streets lead to a lot of your different traffic flow. So that has to be worked through with, with volumes. And we might have to recalculate our lights that are, make that work. But we're avoiding traffic impact, so that's, we're engineering.
Right. But we do have the ability to adjust those lights. I mean, I'm not saying adjust, you know, day one, but we do. Right. But we do have the ability with all the upgrades we've done. We have the ability to adjust the lights for flow patterns. Okay.
So eight, one's the one we're voting for second reading by title?
Yeah, these will all be second reading.
Moves said bill passed to second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance enlarging a GB General Business District by rezoning land located at three oh nine East Market Street from R one, single-family residence district to GB General Business District. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, two, an ordinance enlarging a GB General Business District by rezoning land located at three ten East Gay from R two, one and two family residence district to GB General Business District. Same thing, property next door.
We've just said there'll be read the second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance enlarging a GB General Business District by rezoning land located at three ten East Gay Street from R two, one and two family residence district to GB General Business District. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, three, an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at southwest corner of one forty-one Northwest Twenty-One Road.
Moves said bill be passed to second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property, property recently annexed in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the southwest corner of one forty-one Northwest Twenty-One Road in Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Item eight, four, an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as right-of-way for a portion of Northwest Twenty-One Road, Holden Street.
Let me get the words right. Move said bill to second reading, right?
Yep.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as right-of-way for a portion of Northwest Twenty-One Road, Holden Street. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
All right, an ordinance accepting transfer of real estate for a portion of right-of-way for Northwest Twenty-One Road.
The county has executed a quitclaim deed that would transfer the ownership of that piece of Northwest Twenty-One Road from the county to the city. And now that these annexation zoning items have been completed, it's appropriate for the city to act on and accept that right-of-way, and from here, then we would have it recorded. And then we'll start calling it North Holden Street.
Moves said bill could pass the second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting transfer of real estate for a portion of the right-of-way for Northwest Twenty-One Road. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Item eight, six.
I was listening to them out there.
An ordinance, an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, county of Johnson, Missouri, for debt service purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, each year, we must hold a public hearing to receive public input on the current year's property tax levy. This year, two thousand nineteen, tax levies are point three six oh eight for a hundred, hundred dollar assessed valuation for general fund, point nineteen sixty per hundred dollar assessed valuation for the park fund, and point five nine, hundred dollar assessed valuation for the debt service. These levies have not changed to the two thousand eighteen numbers. The assessed valuations are, they will bring in eight hundred, eight thousand five, eighty-five in property tax revenue for the general fund, four thou, um, four hundred thirty-nine thousand, two fifty-three for the park fund, and one million seventy-one thousand five thirty-seven for the debt service fund, for a total of two million three hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Hundred nineteen three seventy-five for the park. We did have some revenue due to new construction, and that is five thousand three seventy-four for the general fund, two thousand nine nineteen for the park fund, and eight thousand eight, eight thousand eight eight for the debt service, for a total increase of seventeen thousand eighty-two dollars. Staff recommend approval of the ordinance.
We have to move to second reading?
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, county of Johnson, Missouri, for debt service purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Next up, item eight, seven, an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, county of Johnson, Missouri, for general revenue fund purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes.
Moves said bill be passed by second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, county of Johnson, Missouri, for general revenue fund purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, eight, an ordinance fixing the annual, annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, county of Johnson, Missouri, for park fund purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes.
Out of curiosity, if we vote no, does that mean we just, these taxes stop like? Oh, okay.
We don't want that.
I think I asked that last year.
I haven't seen somebody ask that before.
Moves said bill to second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, county of Johnson, Missouri, for park fund purposes for the year two thousand nineteen and levying said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, nine, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and the Secretary of the Air Force for mutual aid for fire services.
Mayor and council, this is just another mutual aid contract that we can lay out, make sure everything's laid out upfront. So when we do have to call them, remember they call on us. We know what's going to happen.
Questions or discussions here, boy.
Said bill be the second reading by title.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and the Secretary of the Air Force for mutual aid for fire services. This is for adoption or rejection. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, other business. First up, nine, one, Missouri Military Community Reinvestment Grant Program Application Letter of Support presented by Harold.
So as I mentioned at the last council meeting, staff was going to work with the Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission to put forward an application on behalf of the city of Warrensburg, hoping to conduct a housing study with emphasis on meeting military needs as well as other community needs. Since last council meeting, White Men Area Leadership Council has moved forward very aggressively. They're also partnering with Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission to put an application forward. I believe that supporting the White Men Area Leadership Council's application benefits us more than putting in our own for a couple of reasons. One is it covers a broader base area, so it includes Sedalia and Nod Noster, so you have more partners, show more support, gives it more competitiveness across the state. Also, by supporting White Men Area Leadership Council, if it is approved, I believe that would also give us access to some other grant funding that the city would not have otherwise if we move forward with it on our own, because they're a nongovernmental entity and therefore eligible for additional housing programming funding and those types of things that we would not be. So based off of that, we're, I'm recommending that we provide letters of support to White Men Area Leadership Council's applications on both of these grant programs that they're doing, as opposed to us doing our own via, and to partner and provide support with their application.
Enter proof. Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to other business, item nine, two, Neighborhood Assistance Program Application Letter of Support presented by Harold.
Similar thing, except I believe this one is more geared towards some, some funding towards what? For the efforts that they do and potentially providing some funding available for a permanent full-time staff member to help them do their, their works and their responsibility. That's similar application.
Enter proof.
I've got people.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Item ten, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Anybody sign up? Nobody signed up. All right, moving on to mayoral appointments. I have three appointments that I'd like to make, and council has been included via email in the applications. And those are to Planning and Zoning, Steve Westhead and Shari Backs, and to the WCVB, Joe Eckleton. Move to approve.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Holmberg?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item twelve, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and door City Council. All right, on to city manager report.
Just a couple of things real quick. First of all, I was doing a little motion last week with a lot of good barbecue, a barbecue competition. So I just thank you to Mayor and Lund, Detective Jacob's for attending that. A lot of good food, good turnout. Unfortunately, I didn't win again, but I bet my game, but there was a lot of fun.
I'm the new guy, but come on.
Your try tip was good.
You didn't vote for me, so.
I didn't ask my opinion, then.
I don't know who voted for what, doesn't matter. But the second thing is, is we issued a press release this last week regarding the hiring of our new fire chief. Chief Bob Shaw will be joining us from Decoy, Illinois. And we're very excited to have him come on board. He will begin his duties next Tuesday after Labor Day.
Work our way around. Matthew, anything?
Yes, we, we've been working to upgrade our utility buildings elsewhere. Yes, uh, we, we've been working to upgrade our utility billing software, uh, and cashier software, uh, through Minko. And we got, uh, I'm going to mention, uh, uh, a thanks from Tyler for the job that, uh, Paul has done on our city collecting. Um, I think he's probably done a little bit of their job, and that's why they were paying me. And so, but I just wanted to, to put that out there.
Bart, anything?
Curious if we know who's gonna go to ICS in Chicago yet.
What's the date?
The date, um, Chicago dates are, show Wednesday, the sixteenth of October, half day Thursday, October seventeenth. So getting to an appointment, need to make either need to release rooms or, and or make up, uh, plane reservations.
I can make the plane reservation and.
Uh, I will attend.
Well, do you guys wanna go? I mean, I can go, but if one of you guys wanna go, I'd love to.
Need to check on the dates? I cannot. I can't?
I wanna go to Chicago, but.
I'm afraid my wife will cut me if I go to Chicago. She really wants to go there.
It's the sixteenth and seventeenth you said, though?
Wednesday, the sixteenth is the most important day. This, uh, the Thursday is a pretty slow morning.
No, I, um, best not.
I can go.
Will you let me know if you're going both days or one day? You know, just let me down this week.
I'll look and let you know. Uh, last year, I did the marathon trip, uh, leave at, you know, zero dark thirty and get home at the same time the following day, um, and save the, the city hotel room and stuff. And so, um, if we can make that work, I would suggest, uh,
Yeah, I'll just write it.
it makes for a very long, very long day. Um, but it does say.
But if we, if we carpool it, we can.
Yeah, we can carpool up and then, uh, share a cab and, and, uh, uh, make it back and not have to spend hotel, uh, city funds, so I.
Your husband may help you put together and tear down.
Uh, Marcy is available both days, and so we're kinda waiting to make that decision based on what the need was.
Right.
And we can make that decision now.
The three of us can handle it. So I'll do like I did previous year. So we'll have a council meeting that Monday night, and then as soon as the council meeting's done, I'll get on the road and make it about halfway and be there on Tuesday afternoon to set up the booth.
Okay, cool. Well, we'll go with that, and then, uh, did that coordinate with you for flights or Cindy?
I can do that.
Cindy, okay.
With Cindy, this will be coordinated your flight.
Yeah, we'll get with Cindy and, yeah, and then find a direct flight and, and, uh, zip up and zip, zip back.
Did that one, did that one banner ever, did we get that one banner fixed that we rigged up enough for Dallas?
We're working on it. We update those every year anyway, so we have them reprinted every year anyway, so.
Anything else, Bart?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Yep, Slim?
Roundabout nearing completion. We did have a whole lot on Saturday. We've got a new more asphalt to do over on Twenty-One Road, patient project, rain weather. As usual, the whole project has been, uh, striping. It's, uh, the final thing left of JCPM, the finisher's hall, the luminary lights. Uh, then we finished grading and, uh, some of the final potential work we've done. But we, we fought weather through this whole project, uh, windstorm, we had a little Saturday that, uh, we had a lot of damage on the south side of town and we had, uh, we got three house-sized aisles of, uh, brush, uh, for this park. Thanks to Parks Park for allowing us to open that up and have it out there. We've, uh, discussed with, uh, Harman, we're bringing in a, uh, a chipper and chipette instead of burner at this time. So that will be made available to residents if they so choose to have that for some use.
I do have a question, Slim. Don't mean to put you on the spot. With all the rain this afternoon, and I work at Gay Street, there on McGuire, all that water, those trucks are just going through it. Are we, got any kind of plan on to try to fix that eventually? Cause every time it has so much rain, there's just right there in front of Conoco, it's a pool, Gay Street and McGuire.
Gay and McGuire, where the plate somewhere?
I don't know, but it's just so much water and those trucks and cars are just.
Well, McGuire's, I told council before, is a gutter. Uh, you know, there's gonna be a point to where we, there has to be a little small green project done with. Figuring out, we don't need a payment there.
Anything that works, like in the next year or two? Thank you.
As we discussed last council meeting about having a, a meeting to discuss priority projects for a possible bond issuance vote of the voters, uh, we'll be discussing that, uh, probably next month.
The only thing that, there's only a third size for a grain at Emerson, um, down that area that, uh, progress over to clear down the, to separate the park. That is the only green there in the area.
It was bad today, it was bad.
Yeah.
Way you test.
I was driving on McGuire, it was, yeah, it was.
Is, is it changed from P F of the motor boat?
No, I know, yeah.
I think it's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Here?
Uh, contractors in the process ordering the surveillance cameras and video recorders for city all PD. So, uh, this will be the first of any kind of, uh, camera system, security camera system that's city all. And, uh, so they have a huge upgrade, uh, PD, I think they have maybe sixteen cameras now, and we're gonna be pushing out about thirty cameras in the huge part.
And I had a question and, and a community request. Um, wanted to ask what, how challenging would it be to live stream city council meetings? I've had a couple of people contact me, uh, recently about that.
Um, there's, there'd be a cost associated with that, we'd have to research that. Um, I mean, technology's still there.
Or even via social, social media, or maybe, you know, live stream via Facebook, but still record, uh, YouTube or anything, anything like that. Just wanted to pose that, uh, been approached multiple times, uh, in the recent month.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to do some research on that.
I think we, I think when we initially did that, we looked at Facebook Live, but at that point in time, it was only gave you like an hour and ten minutes. And I kind of shut it down.
What else have you, probably significant upgrade for quality of microphones and cameras?
Hey, kinda cool though. Some people can't be here.
A lot of those other types of things. And not, I mean, my experience too is in working in communities that you have that type of service, you add another level of, not this is a bad, but public participation from the community where they know they have a live feed, they can grandstand and they may be talking to you on issues that really the council, the city has no regulatory authority on, but it's an opportunity for them to speak publicly and, and, uh, so you get a lot of grandstanding from that as well.
Yep, I can see that.
I can see that. Good point.
Okay, just something to, uh, to consider, uh, not, not a huge priority, but, uh, would, would love to hear more about it. Uh, Marcy?
I was gonna say, we do typically have our videos, uh, of the recording pretty much the next day.
Yeah, we're, we're a little bit behind on that right now. We just have some other priorities going on.
We have to weigh whether the cost is worth having it live versus having it available the next day.
Right. And I, and I think it's a significant upgrade to, to even have it recorded, so, um. Marcy, WCVB?
Nothing additional.
Danielle? Jill, anything from Main Street?
Thank you, everybody, for your approval of our press, and, um, thank you for the communication between Slim and his group for our power upgrades in downtown. I also was contacted by the contractor as well, and they came in and explained everything to me, um, so that is greatly appreciated. And if, um, anybody is unaware of the Loveless Local Initiative Clean the Berg that is happening on Friday and Saturday, September sixth and seventh, I would encourage everybody to get a group of friends or a group at your workplace together and find a project in the community. Um, as Slim stated, there's still several trees down, and I'm sure, um, there are some homeowners that would appreciate a knock on their door offering a group to cut and clean up their trees that are down in their, um, home. So I encourage everybody to participate in that event as well.
Good.
Suzanne, anything from the chamber? Great.
Have a question.
Hello? Rich?
Um, I was at Tantera this afternoon as a breakout speaker for the Real Voices, Real Choices Conference. It's a conference, we spoke to about a hundred people about crisis intervention teams. It's a conference that deals with, uh, people with mental illness, uh, developmental disabilities and their families. And so it was a great opportunity to talk to them about CIT and what we've been able to do for, uh, folks with mental illness and disabilities here in Warrensburg as a community. And so it was a great, great audience to have from all over the state. And I just wanted to let you know that we're out there spreading the message that we're doing good stuff here.
Don't, anything? Anybody else have anything, uh, for the good of the cause?
I'd love to thank everyone who chooses to stay here to the very end, instead of just ditty mounting out whatever their piece of the pie. Uh, the rest of us who are forced to be here to the end, uh.
I agree, but I don't blame them sometimes, too.
Well, me neither.
I would probably do the same thing, Marcy and Marcy.
Right, but there's, like, this gentleman and that gentleman over there, man, they, they're, they're troopers, man. Like, I, I love them. They're, they, they, they stay awake and everything, like, there's one gentleman died that was nodding off. Sure someone else noticed it.
It's okay. I got nodded off, too.
I was, it was me, that's, that's the secret.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else we could call on?
Nope.
Nope. All right, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Boy, that looks like a good idea.
It did.
Well, thanks for coming by and talking with me today.
Well, that's all right.
Sorry I wasn't available. I'll have to have you home for, for my house for poppy and peanut butter. Linda Barton, she's one of my friends and goes out to catch a dog.
Yeah, I think I saw her, uh, pants, or she was two hours from dying. But I think she's gonna pull through. And I told her, I said, if you pull through, I'm taking you to Vegas. And then when I found out she's pulling through, I'm like, dang it, now I gotta take her to Vegas. Yeah, fuck them, buddy. All right. Go over here and wear a tie. Bye, see you, Rob. Hey there. Okay, I think I got it. Yeah, it's black, so it doesn't matter to me. Okay, what do you need to know?
Um, names of the appointments, there are three of them.
This is being too easy.
There were two of them for.
Yeah, Stephen. This one is the WCVB. No, I'm sorry, he's a B and Z.
Is it a home or is it just a, is it just a house?
They're mixed in all over.
Yeah, they're, they're going everywhere.
Uh, and she's B and Z, Shari Backs. And then this one is the WCVB. That is?
I think.
Everything else is good, okay?
Yeah, um, I can officially say a new person has arrived.
Oh, all right, that'll help a lot. So you guys, well, don't get to lose me. Other people do. Well, no. Well, we're used to you. We don't wanna lose you now. So does this person have any experience or do you have to spend time training?
Little bit of time training, um, but he's gonna take most of the county stuff. So he'll be handling ports and county commission and stuff like that, so.
Good. Well, that'll be a lot, that'll, that'll free you up for other things, so.
Circuit court takes the most time, cause it's back and forth, it's back and forth. I gotta look up the same person like three times to get this.
So much going on, I don't.
It took me like a month to figure out where to find them.
Yeah.
You'll see a byline eventually.
That's good, good news.
And so we can give it a tour, we can basically call the kids. And record showing. See the first dump down in one line. Tell them the emergency line, and just tell them the address, tell them the, the disturbance, and, uh, just leave it a day or a week. It may not make a mess, but that'll be a law.
Well, it's just like for some, for some residents. And I said, well, we were. I just stopped at one. Where there's scattered, anywhere in the, in Robin, I think it has some other conditions in her property. I know, I just know.
I, the reason I tried to call you back later is I wanted you to know about, I wanna be sure you're okay with that. So I was just calling you now.
Um, Wendell Davis is bringing a file in tomorrow.
Okay.
And he says like eight AM, he's gotta get to K U N A. For his appointment this morning, that he wants to get recorded tomorrow.
Okay, well, I could, you know, he knows I won't be here by eight, but.
Well, he'll bring it to me and I'll get it to you, but I didn't know cases in town, um, because they're closing Wednesday morning.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, I can take it, sure.
Okay, and it may be a piece of paper, the Mylar, there was a full, it took him all day to try to get this done, cause everybody's machine was broken. So it took us an hour. We finally printed it, but it didn't, it never dried, and so it smeared. So he's got a Mylar and a piece of paper and have you both sign both.
I have learned that, I guess if it's in blue, it's a problem.
There's no blue on it. I told him no blue, but it may be so smeared that she'll only record the paper one. So when I bring it to you, I'm gonna have you sign both, because I think the Mylar is gonna be so smeared, she won't record it. But that's why he's, he's made three trips to Clinton today to get that surveyor to sign it because of all the problems. Which is why I didn't get it here by five today, but he said I'm gonna.